Good afternoon, everybody. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the rolls.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Here.
Councilmember Fitch?
Present.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Thank you. Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, we have a call.
Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Special Meeting of March 20th, 2020? Is there a second?
Second.
Second provided by Councilwoman Fitch. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. The March 20th, 2020 Journal is approved. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of March 24th, 2020?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Gray?
Second from Councilwoman Gray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The March 24th, 2020 Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this afternoon, so we will move to communication.
Madam Chair, we have no tax compromises, zoning matters, or road bridge matters this afternoon, so we will move to other communications. Your other communications, item number one.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
So we can move on to item number two?
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four, first district.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. There are no add-ons this afternoon. Please proceed with the report of the county executive. The county executive was unable to be in attendance at today's meeting, so we do have a video that he has sent.
Good afternoon. On March 7th, I stood with Governor Mike Parson to announce that we had our first positive case of COVID-19 in St. Louis County. A little more than three weeks later, that number has grown to more than 300, and we know that more positive results will follow as more people get tested. As this pandemic spreads across the country and throughout our region, we have three priorities: saving lives, making sure residents' basic needs are met, and restarting the economy as soon as we responsibly can. To save lives, we must flatten the curve to prevent the rapid spread of this virus so our health systems are not overwhelmed. Slowing a pandemic or mitigating it is critical. Doing so reduces the number of cases that are active at any given time and gives our hospital systems the proper capacity to respond. To prevent the spread, we continue to increase community awareness through our website, stlcorona.com, the media, billboards, social media, and conversations with the clergy, business leaders, and municipal and regional leaders. Through the Department of Human Services, we are working with more than 20 agencies to educate the public and make sure they are aware of how this virus is spread, common symptoms, and how to get tested. Community groups are making sure kids who would typically be in school are getting fed, and those who need shelter have a safe place to stay, and that utilities will not be cut off or more and more people will find themselves out of work. We have called on volunteers to help us in various ways, and we have a team working to mobilize as many of these folks as possible. More than 300 medical professionals have stepped up. You're welcome to as well. To find out how you can help, go to stlcorona.com. Prevention includes limiting crowd sizes and stressing the importance of social distancing. We have closed playgrounds and basketball courts at our county parks. Restaurant business is limited to carryout, delivery, and drive-through. Graduations, proms, and spring breaks, and other traditions have been interrupted by this pandemic. Weddings have been postponed, and funerals are being held without loved ones there to mourn. But these decisions were necessary. We are in a new normal, and we will be for most, if not all, of the spring. We are resilient, and we will come back strong. We have great challenges before us, and we must focus on stopping this virus and keeping as many of our residents healthy as possible. Testing is essential to the treatment and ultimately determining the scope of this pandemic. We are working to expedite the screening process, increase test availability, and make sure that testing is done equitably. We have testing sites in North, South, West, and Mid-County, and we are working closely with our hospital groups and our hospital leaders to come together to ensure that they are prepared as this virus continues to take its toll on our region. I know that this pandemic has landed a devastating punch to our economy. Our businesses are suffering. To address this, I have created an economic rescue team. I'm working with Civic Progress, the Regional Business Council, and the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership to determine ways to shore up our economy. We have to offer financial assistance if we expect our small businesses to bounce back. What I need from you most of all is all of you to pledge to take care of yourselves, to keep close tabs on your loved ones, your friends, and your neighbors, to not gather in groups, and when you go to the park or the grocery store, remember social distancing. Working from home while you're trying to educate your children from home as well creates new stress on families. Hang in there. I know this is a lot to deal with. This crisis is the first thing I think about when I wake up and the last thing I think about before bed. I worry about my family, and I worry about yours. I worry about the economic state of this county and this country. But I know that together, we have this. Take care of yourself, eat healthy food, get plenty of sleep, exercise, and lean on your faith to find the strength that you sometimes feel you don't have. There is no weakness on leaning on others. Thank you.
All right. That brings us to the public forum portion of our agenda this afternoon. I would like to remind everyone that it is an important priority that we continue operating a participatory government process amidst the current public health crisis, and council has worked together to ensure that we continue promoting transparency in our processes and make ourselves available to the public's feedback. So as we move into public forum, I want to go over and remind folks of this new procedure during our virtual meetings for how to submit your comments electronically. This information is also available on the homepage of the council's website. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlouisaco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held, at least an hour before the meeting is set to start, will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain your name and physical address. The email must be 400 words or less, if this is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, the same time allotted per person during normal council meetings. The administrative director or a designated will read your comment out loud during the meeting, and it will be recorded into the Journal. Bear in mind that when submitting these comments electronically, you are expected to uphold the same standard of decorum that we anticipate during a regular council meeting. Thank you again to everyone that has played a part in helping to set up this process. With that, Madam Clerk, please read the comments.
Madam Chair, we have received written public comments from seven individuals.
Please read the comments into the record.
Madam Chair, I'll have the first several set of comments. First comment is from Paul Mortensen, 11534 Clayton Road, Rotten Acton, 363131. Given that the supply of diagnostic tests for COVID-19 are now keeping up with demand, what is the county's plan for aggressive contact tracing, testing, and quarantining those who test positive and all of their contacts? No plan, why not? If the decision has been made not to perform aggressive contact tracing, why did the county make that decision? Citizen comment from Celeste Whittle, 3116 South Ridge Park Lane, St. Louis, Missouri, Note: Several following comments are attributable or paraphrased from a recent letter to the editor by Bob Mahatchuk to the Call Newsweekers. The rest are comments. Residing in unincorporated St. Louis County means Clayton is our king. With seven council districts, we and council six unincorporated South St. Louis County rely on Councilman Ernie Trachis to represent us, and Ernie must then hope that three other council members agree with him on issues affecting South County. Many times, Councilman Trachis is outvoted by council Democrats Kelly Dunaway and Lisa Clancy, even though Dunaway and Clancy don't live in South County. Dunaway and Clancy have the privilege of living in protected municipalities, so they are not affected by the votes they take on the council. Still, they dictate for we South County. Our South County tax dollars are sent to Clayton, and we have the privilege of begging and grovelling to get some of our own money back. Councilmembers, we didn't elect decide what South County needs and how to spend our hard-earned money, and South County receives very little from Clayton. With Councilwoman Dunaway and Clancy living in municipalities such as Maplewood and Le Du, et cetera, they are protected from the very laws they pass because the laws don't apply to the municipalities where Dunaway and Clancy live. I'm ice for this. We in North and South County are essentially Clayton's warped little science lab. Dunaway and Clancy have come up with several foolish ideas that won't affect their own citizens in their protected municipalities of Maplewood where they live, but their crazy ideas are forced onto we citizens in unincorporated North and South County. We put the bill for Dunaway's and Clancy's follies both in money and in our safety. They are safe, we are not. Councilmembers dictating the citizens in unincorporated St. Louis County and not considering its needs is outrageous and tiresome. Dunaway and Clancy need to live with the laws they pass and not be exempted merely because they live in a privileged, protected municipality. Congress cannot exempt itself from the laws they pass. Why should Dunaway and Clancy enjoy such a privilege? South County needs relief from the dictatorship of two very privileged and entitled councilmembers: Kelly Dunaway and Lisa Clancy. Citizen comments from Chris Davis. For some reason, I'm missing the address here. County Executive Page, Chairwoman Clancy, ladies and gentlemen of the council. On behalf of 120 contractors and over 100 materials, equipment, and service suppliers, Site Improvement Association thanks you and applauds you for recognizing critical infrastructure as an essential service. Site contractors are committed to performing the necessary work to guarantee that trucks can travel safely and efficiently on our roads to deliver food and gas to our merchants and medical supplies in PPE to our hospitals. Site contractors are proud to continue working on critical infrastructure of our water supply to guarantee clean drinking water, our healthiest resource. Site contractors are working on the critical infrastructure of installing telecommunication lines to guarantee our medical professionals can utilize essential technology and enable teleconference calls and online meetings that are now becoming our new normal. Site would remind everyone that there is a need to forming critical infrastructure projects during these times as it provides added measures of road and bridge projects. Reduced traffic volumes provide fewer opportunities for access. Those that may criticize the continuous of critical construction projects are unaware of strict OSHA guidelines on social distancing. Many site contractors and safety personnel oversee these guidelines on current job sites. Construction is truly critical, not only to the financial health, but the physical health of our society today. We must carry on. Thank you, Chris Davis, Government Affairs Director, Site Improvement Association. Citizen comment from Tom Sullivan, 751 Syracuse University City, Missouri, 63130. Madam Chair and members of the council, the Metropolitan Sewer District's bond proposal that was beyond the April ballot as Proposition Y has now been delayed to the June election. It is to authorize 500 million in bonds and will lead to higher sewer bills. Given the billions of dollars being spent by MSD to meet clean water standards and the ever-increasing impact that higher sewer bills are having on families in the area, I suggest the council have a committee to review the operations and finances of the sewer district, not just for wastewater matters, but also stormwater. Last year, there was flooding all over the area, and it only gets worse. It was a little over 25 years ago that the county council established a stormwater committee due to so many people complaining and problems. The committee held public hearings all over the area, and a number of people showed up to tell them of their problems. Almost everyone was told by MSD that they could do nothing to help. The situation hasn't changed after all these years. About five years ago, there was a meeting in University City for citizens who were having food problems due to flooding of the River DePere. MSD officials attended and told homeowners that the erosion problems caused by the River DePere were their problems, not MSD's. Given all these things, I think MSD issues should be a concern of the council. A large part of the problem at the sewer district has been disinterested board members. Last September, County Executive Sam Page appointed Amy Fair to the MSD Board. Of the three monthly board meetings this year, she has missed two. It seems she does not have the time to devote to her board duties. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Citizen comments from Maria Chappell Nadal, 7133 Dartmouth Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri, 63130. To Executive Page, communication with St. Louis County elected officials is better, but there are improvements that can be made. A suggestion for better performance in your administration would be to delineate positive cases by zip code. That information should be public. My understanding from multiple sources is that the number of positive COVID-19 cases in North St. Louis County are disproportionately higher than other areas in the county. Why is there only one COVID-19 testing site in North St. Louis County? Why are a majority of resources going to the three testing sites in West County? Why are there not enough resources in a predominantly African-American community? Do you understand why we are losing patience with your leadership? Executive Page, there comes a time when delegation without oversight is pure negligence in a crisis. The failure to equitably address a population within a cancer and autoimmune cluster is pure negligence on your part. You are the county executive, and you're failing black people. Why are you failing to address this population equitably? That's the word you used on Twitter, equitable. Let us know when you're prepared to do a better job addressing black people in North St. Louis County. Hopefully, it will happen before this crisis is over. Citizen comments from Andrew Lechner, 250 Avenue H, St. Louis, Missouri, 63126. Councilmembers, I have a plan to give St. Louis County and extra 500 infirmary beds for non-critical patients. I went to set up three infirmaries for Triage 1 and Triage 3 patients. Triage 1 are people who are sick but will get better with medical treatment. Triage 3 are people who are ill and will die regardless of medical treatment. This will allow Triage 2 patients, those who would live if only they received medical treatment, to go to the hospitals. Hopefully, we can partner with Samaritan's Purse before they get tapped out. I used two books to create my plan: Legal Considerations for Tactical Medical Responders and Emergency Medical Planning for Large Venues, both by R. DiGiorgio. I've already had the virus, so I'm not worried about getting sick myself. I plan to staff the infirmaries with young college kids, those who can get sick but won't tax the healthcare system. The sites are 8300 Morganford, the former St. Mark's convent with over 100 individual rooms with sinks. It has all utilities, and it has an industrial kitchen. It needs beds. It does have an actual A Bed Infirmary, which you could use as a general urgent care to take the pressure off the ERs. We could transfer positive CV-19 cases to individual rooms. Also, every county cop has trained active shooter drills at 8300 Morganford. During Katrina, shots were fired in the Refuge Stadium, but police couldn't immediately deploy because they didn't know the layout of the ground. Every cop and every EMT in the county has trained at 8300 Morganford, so if we're going to have a chaotic crisis, we might as well have it there. The White House Retreat in Oakville, it has over 250 individual rooms with running water and a full bath. Also, a priest is on site to administer last rites. It also has an industrial kitchen. River City Casino, open the atrium as a general urgent care to take the pressure off the ERs. Move beds into the banquet hall to house positive CV-19 cases. Again, full kitchen and food on hand. Kenrick's Meat is willing to donate food, and MB Thomas is ready to provide RVs for medical staff. I've spoken to both of them. I'm not sure how the property owners feel about this idea, but with a little carrot dollar sign and a lot of stick, public shaming for not helping, I think I can motivate them accordingly. Citizen comments from Kizilda Strakoff, 10448 Gregory Court, St. Louis, Missouri, 63128. I wish to express my concern and anger regarding the release of inmates at the St. Louis County Jail due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This was a horrible ruling on the part of Judge Kerr and will result in more harm than good. Releasing violent criminals into society puts citizens at great risk. Why hasn't County Executive Page come out against this ruling?
Madam Chair, that is all the public comments.
Thank you. That concludes the public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill Number 89, introduced by Councilmember Trachis, an ordinance, amending ordinance Number 27,0726 by repealing and reenacting Section 2 pertaining to PC 49-19 McBride Vera Land Company LLC. Bill Number 90, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept four grants totaling up to $646,923 from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, appropriating the same for support of police functions related to drug trafficking mitigation efforts, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill Number 91, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance, amending ordinance Number 27,682 by repealing and reenacting Sections 1 and 2 pertaining to a grant from the Office of National Drug Control Policy for support of a detective assigned to the Multi-Jurisdictional Drug Task Force. Bill Number 92, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a fuel sales contract and up to three one-year renewals with the city of Blackjack, Missouri. Bill Number 93, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an automotive and equipment repair contract and up to three subsequent renewals with the city of Blackjack, Missouri. Bill Number 94, introduced by Councilmember Clancy, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with St. Louis Integrated Health Network to participate in the Elevate Women program. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you. We will move on to perfection.
Bill Number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill Number 20 is held.
On Bill Number 5, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch, Trachis, and Harder.
I move to hold Bill Number 5.
Bill Number 5 is held.
Bill Number 32, introduced by Councilmember Trachis.
Please hold Bill Number 33.
Bill Number 32 is held.
Bill Number 36, introduced by Councilmember Fitch.
I move to hold Bill Number 36.
Bill Number 36 is held.
Bill Number 76, introduced by Councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
I move to hold Bill Number 76.
Bill Number 76 is held.
Bill Number 81, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 81.
Second by Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 81 is perfected.
Bill Number 82, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 82.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 82 is perfected.
Bill Number 83, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 83.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 83 is perfected.
Bill Number 84, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 84.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 84 is perfected.
Bill Number 85, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill Number 85.
Second by Rich Davis.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 85 is perfected.
Bill Number 86, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
I move to perfect Bill Number 86.
Second, Councilwoman Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 86 is perfected.
Bill Number 87, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
This is the bill that appropriates and sets apart $1 million from the Health Fund to support costs related to St. Louis County's COVID-19 pandemic response. I move to perfect Bill Number 87.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Harder. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 87 is perfected. I move to advance Bill Number 87 to the final passage order of business. Second. Second from Councilwoman Dunaway. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you please do a roll call on that? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on the motion to advance Bill Number 87 to the final passage order of business, there are seven ayes.
The motion carries. Bill Number 87 is advanced to the final passage order of business.
Bill Number 87, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 87.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Harder. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 87, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 87 is finally passed.
Bill Number 88, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect Bill Number 88.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number 88 is perfected. Moving on to final passage.
Bill Number 320, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold Bill Number 320. Bill Number 320 is held.
Substitute Bill Number 2 for Bill Number 385, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
I move to hold Substitute Bill Number 2 for Bill Number 385. Substitute Bill Number 2 for Bill 385 is held.
Bill Number 14, introduced by Councilmembers Trachis, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
Move to hold Bill Number 14 in place.
Bill Number 14 is held.
Bill Number 72, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 72.
Second by Fitch.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 72, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 72 is finally passed.
Bill Number 73, introduced by Council-
Bill Number 73, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 73.
Second by Councilwoman Tracus.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 73, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 73 is finally passed.
Bill Number 74, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 74.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 74, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 74 is finally passed.
Bill Number 75, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 75.
Second, Councilwoman Gray.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill 75, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 75 is finally passed.
Bill Number 77, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill Number 77.
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Harder. Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 77, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 77 is finally passed.
Bill Number 78, introduced by Councilmember Dunaway.
Uh, I move for final passage of Bill Number 78.
Second, Councilwoman Daze.
Roll call.
Councilmember Daze.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on Bill Number 78, there are seven ayes.
Bill Number 78 is finally passed.
Madam Chair, we have no resolutions this afternoon, so we will move to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number one.
Um, please drop from the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number two.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
The appointment, the appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number four, third district.
Uh, please continue to hold.
So ordered.
Item number five.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
And item number seven.
The appointment be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Moving on to new business, we have three orders this evening, and this afternoon I will read each one. Uh, the first one is Order Number 1 in the matter of communications from Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Procurement, and Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 1, Councilwoman Gray. Should I wait? I move for the adoption of Order Number 1.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Councilwoman Tracus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 1 is adopted.
Order Number 2 in the matter of the selection and revocation of investment agents for the county employee's retirement fund.
I move for the adoption of Order Number 2, please. Second.
Second from Councilwoman Tracus. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 2 is adopted.
Order Number 3 in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate bought by him as trustee at the Collector's 2009 Tax Sale.
I move for the ad, oh, I'm sorry. Order 3, please. Second.
Second from Councilwoman Tracus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Order Number 3 is adopted. That brings us to the end of our agenda today. Any further remarks from anyone on the council?
Motion to adjourn.
Um, thank you, everyone, for bearing with us again as we continue to work through the challenges, um, of doing virtual meetings, um, learning something every week, and hopefully there will be a smoother experience next week. Thanks again to our tech team and to our clerk for working with us to make sure that we all have a. So, I think I heard a motion to adjourn from Councilwoman Harder.
Second.
All right. Second from Councilwoman Fitch. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.